Call this November 9th, 2020 council meeting to order. We have Brownie Troop Number 91227 here. If the young ladies would rise and lead us into President of Allegiance.
I have the pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hazeltine.
President.
Heffinger.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of October 26, 2020 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltine.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will again meet in two weeks. I think it's the week of Thanksgiving if that's correct. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report this evening.
Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report this evening.
Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazeltine?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing new.
Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and I'm looking to schedule a meeting sometime in early December.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. Special legislation.
I missed one.
Sorry about that. I figured you didn't hear from me today.
I know the order, right? Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, no meetings scheduled yet, but I have been working and thank the Planning Director and the Law Director as well. We've been working on two things and one is the proposed ordinance on feeding wild animals and the second one is the improvements to the permitting of demolition. And I think we have, we're pretty close to putting those two pieces of legislation together, I think, in a way that is what the intention was at the beginning and also I think in a manner that they will serve the community and also pass out of special legislation up to council so that everybody can take a look at them. And so I expect that we'll meet sometime probably in the next two weeks to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 2219, health insurance renewal with Medina Mutual of Ohio, 2220 advance request, 2221 repay advance request, 2222 budget amendments, 2223 2020 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program for the county court, 2224 amend salaries and benefits code, MCRC part-time pay rate, 2025 amend salaries and benefits code, MCRC part-time position creation, 2226 increase expenditure advances outdoors, Inc., police department, 2227 expenditure over 15,000 for premier fire rescue fire department through the CARES Act, 2228 expenditure over 15,000 AED striker medical fire department through the CARES Act, 2229 expenditure over 15,000 works geotechnical engineering department, 2230 consent legislation with ODOT signed replacement in the city, 2231 discussion of MCRC reopening changes, 2232 CARES Act small business grants, 2233 amend salaries and benefits code, new MCRC superintendent position, and finally, 2234 extend public defender contract for 2021. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. In relation or regard to the COVID-19, Medina County was moved last week to Level Red on November 5th. We're asking all the constituents of the city and the county to remain vigilant with avoiding large gatherings, wearing masks in public, washing hands frequently and social distancing. Updated information on business openings, safety protocols, et cetera, on the city and the county health department website. And we'd just like to continue to encourage folks to support our local businesses. Porter Shoe Repair has signed the lease and will be moving from its current location on West Liberty Street to 799 North Court Street, Unit 26B is in Boy. And that's on the corner, the southwest corner of Highland Drive and North Court Street. They should be moving up there within the next few weeks. And I know Councilman Bill Lamb worked with Medina TV and Miles to document the existing business for the historical value of that. And I know the Porters arranged just yesterday all of their current and previous employees a picture at their current location as well as a picture at their new location. And we've asked that they make that available to Miles as well to include in the documentary. The Medina Community Band is hosting a virtual Veterans Day band concert due to not being able to get people together for the normal Veterans Day concert. And that would be, that will be available on the city website as well as Medina Community Band website, which is www.madinacommunityband.org. The Candlelight Walk event this year will also be a little bit different. It'll be Thursday, November 19th through Sunday, November 22nd. You can go to the Main Street Medina website for the event activities and details, which is www-mainstreetmedina.com. The gazebo, Christmas tree and downtown lighting will take place in the afternoon of November 20th. And they intentionally chose, under recommendation of the Health Department, to not do it in the evening to avoid the gathering of the crowds and too many people on the square in light of the COVID transmission. Main Street Medina is also doing a targeted marketing campaign across northeast Ohio to promote Medina as a day trip holiday destination. And they're hoping to extend the shopping and holiday enjoyment season, not only the end of November and through December, but also into January and early February. Second to last, fiber to the home. If folks are interested in getting further options than just the current providers in Medina County, you can take a survey at the link, www.madina.litcommunities.net. And the more of these surveys that are completed, this project started in Lodi, Seville, Guilford Township, it's moving north through Montville Township and the city can take part in that as long as we have enough people showing interest through the surveys. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Brownie Troop 91227 along with Councilwoman Jess Hazeltine for a proclamation in honor of your democracy badge. So if you want to join me right up here, please.
So on behalf of the city, I have a proclamation for each of you and it has each of your names on here. I will read the first one and then I will hand these out to you, okay? City of Medina proclamation in recognition of Girl Scout Brownie Troop 91227. Whereas through Girl Scouts of America, every girl can grow strong, gain self-confidence and skills for success and learn her duty to the world around her. And whereas the Girl Scout program not only reflects the enduring values and standards that have been part of the organization since 1912, but also lends itself to the challenges girls face in the new millennium. And whereas the members of Girl Scout Brownie Troop 91227 are to be commended for earning their democracy badge, which required learning about local and state government and the legislative, judicial and executive branches of our county government. And now therefore, I Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina and Councilmember Jessica Hazeltine, to hereby congratulate Addison Allen. How'd I do? Pretty good? Thanks. That was a rough one. Emily Bender, Gabriella.
This is you.
Like, yeah, like that. Ireland Gillahan and Ivy Mormon of Brownie Scout Troop 91227 and wish each of you the very best in their future endeavors. And witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Medina to be affixed here to this ninth day of November, 2020. And I congratulate each of you young ladies. Congratulations. You've got the good work, okay?
Do you want to take a picture of him up here? Can you hear it? Okay.
Want to hold it up front? Want to hold him in front of you? There you go.
Good job, girls.
Thank you. And congratulations. Director of Finance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, there's a lot of things on the agenda dealing with the CARES funds. We're working with that and continuing to prepare for a bond issue that'll refinance some of our outstanding debt early part of next year. And I'll discuss the rest of the items when we get to them on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick reminder for our small businesses, I was talking to Councilman Lamb. We do still have face masks available in the Economic Development Department. And Barbara and I will be working to get those deployed out to the small businesses that need them, but if they want to call us, they can do that as well and we'll make sure that they get a box. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Latushka from Medina Municipal Court.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's nothing new to report from the municipal court.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Finance Director has a lot of explaining to do this evening, so I'm going to donate my time to him and I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. McCollough, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick note, I mentioned at the last meeting about the railroad repairs at Coasing to their unloading pit. Those have been completed and the city's rail is open. Just to remind council, tomorrow we are accepting bids for the City Hall Rotunda renovation project. Due to the short timeline for these, this project, the Board of Control will meet tomorrow afternoon to discuss and review and hopefully award that.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department? Anything? Thank you. Okay. Notices, Communications and Petitions, there are none. Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair in a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 18820, ordinance 18920, ordinance 19020, resolution 19120, ordinance 19220, ordinance 19320, ordinance 19420, resolution 19520, ordinance 19620 and ordinance 19720.
Move to suspend the rule requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Discussion on suspending the rules on three readings. Will the clerk please call the roll on suspending the rules requiring three readings?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltine.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 18820, ordinance amending ordinance number 5720 passed March 23rd, 2020 relative
to the Lindenwood Lake Dam Improvements Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request and ordinance that would increase the cost of the project due to some unforeseen overruns that became encountered during the course of it.
And residents have been notified?
Residents have been notified of all the progress in this ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltine.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 188-20 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 18920, ordinance authorizing a job creation grant agreement for Do-It-Best Corp.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for council to approve the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Do-It-Best Corporation for the purpose of expanding and renovating their facility located at 444 Independence Drive, creating 30 new full-time positions to the City of Medina by the year of 2021. Their estimated investment in this renovation and expansion project is $3.1 million and the associated payroll with the 30 new full-time positions is $1,123,200. The agreement will provide Do-It-Best with a grant of up to 40% of new payroll taxes to the City of Medina for four years, which would be a maximum payment of $28,080 over that four-year period. The grant agreement was reviewed by our law director as well as legal counsel for the company. They did have a few minor changes, mainly people that need to sign it, they wanted those names spelled out, a few other small changes. I think the change that is of significance is they really wanted to spell out if they hit their goals earlier than that three-year period, the grant payments would kick in. And of course, we've always done that in the past, so they wanted that spelled out a little bit more. So all those changes have been reviewed by the law director, so what you have in your packet is the final packet. And I know Councilman Rose, you had a couple of questions, so we took care of those, a little cleanup things. The Business Development Committee did meet and review that and unanimously approved with a recommendation to council. And just as a reminder to council and the public, the job creation grant agreements are funded through non-income tax generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Coyne?
Mayor?
Council President Coyne serves on the committee that approved this, but for the rest of council, much like we experienced with Carlisle, the subject that came over to review the project with us from Fort Wayne, Indiana handles a multi-state region for Do-It-Best Corporation, which again is a worldwide company, and told us repeatedly that their experience in the City of Medina with our permitting, our processes, getting their questions answered was by and large better than anywhere else they've ever dealt with. Ours, we handled within, I think, well, they got delayed a little bit with the COVID, but within weeks where they've been waiting months in other areas for similar processes. And I just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltine.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 189-20 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 19020, ordinance amending section 13301 of the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Chief of Police Association memberships.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance permitting membership and leadership Medina for the Police Department.
Thank you. Any further questions? Will clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Hazeltine.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 190-20 passes seven zero.
Resolution 19120, a resolution to disapprove the Medina County Solid Waste Management District's amended draft solid waste management plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. McCollough.
So per the EPA, the solid waste districts required to submit an updated plan every five years and that to forecast the revenue expenditures every 15 years, in a 15-year basis. So based on that information, the increases would have to be approved by the County Board of Commissioners. So if the plan states that the actual revenues and expenses will drive the annual budget, any fee adjustments have to go through the Board of County Commissioners. So currently, the gate rate is $50. It's forecasted out to, I believe, $59 in 2028. And the plan talks about holding that rate through 2035. I'm trying to think what else the council had talked briefly. We talked in finance as well as the last meeting. And you have to render a decision here based on, based on what your feelings are.
Well, thank you. I guess I want to point out two things. The resolution is a resolution to disapprove, so this is kind of confusing. So a yes vote means you disapprove it and a no vote means you approve it.
Here we go again.
It's kind of confusing. But anyways, going to the plan again, you know, the efforts of the county to recycle, at least separate the material to recycle material is good, right? They have a good plan to do that. But the problem that we've always had is once that recycled material is taken to the end user and they get, you know, tickets, away tickets and whatever at the recycling plant, from that point forward, there's no guarantee that that material is recycled. Even though we provide them with recycled material, we've been through this before. Channel 8 had a study and there's been multiple trackers in the garbage and it goes to the landfill. So it's kind of hard to say, well, we believe we're recycling when in fact, you know, we're not really recycling what we think we are. So that's kind of, the way I'm going to vote is yes on this because I disapprove it for the mere fact that there's no checks and balances down at the end stream that actually the recycling is occurring. Though we're being told by the people taking the tickets, yes, we took the recycled materials, nobody wants to tell us if it's actually being recycled. And I think that's a kind of a big hang-up for me is because if I'm going to tell a resident of the City of Medina that, yeah, we want you to recycle and they say, I'm doing my best to recycle, I can't with a straight face tell them, oh yeah, it's all being recycled because I have no idea if it is or isn't. All I know is it's being dropped off at a recycle center and from there, I can't tell you if it's being recycled or not. I think that's my biggest hang-up on it. I know that the county and the city, they are doing their part to try to put it into recycle bins and make sure that they recycle at home, but again, that's no guarantee that the material is actually recycled at the end user. And that's my understanding, correct, Mr. McCollough?
That's correct. However, I did want to add that interim sanitary engineer Jeremy Cinco did provide with the new contractor, Rumke, a list of addresses, and I believe I forwarded that, of the market buyers in this recent contract. So I mean, they are trying to tighten up their contract, but we still are in the same situation as we've been in for the past.
I understand. And I guess I just want to say that, you know, these are very difficult times because I don't think anybody does not, you know, want to not recycle. I think everybody wants to recycle, but we just don't know if it's happening. Any questions?
So John, what is the cost of just sending all your trash to the trash? I've heard $25.
I think, Mr. McCollough, I thought it was like $27 to $29 to take it directly to the landfill?
That number, I mean, it's 27, I believe.
Does $27 just go away and go to the center of the city? What if it gets to $50? No idea if it's going to the center of the city. That's our opinion and that's correct. That's why, at least, I'm going to vote yes to disapprove the plan because it doesn't, there's no logic to the conclusion because again, I think people would even pay more if they knew the material was being recycled. I think residents of the City of Medina would even pay extra if they knew that they were recycling, but there's no guarantee that that's happening and that's kind of the issue we have. But you're correct, Mr. Huber. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Order 190-20 passes seven zero.
Resolution 19120, a resolution to disapprove the Medina County Solid Waste Management District's amended draft solid waste management plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. McCollough.
So per the EPA, the solid waste districts required to submit an updated plan every five years and that to forecast the revenue expenditures every 15 years, in a 15-year basis. So based on that information, the increases would have to be approved by the County Board of Commissioners. So if the plan states that the actual revenues and expenses will drive the annual budget, any fee adjustments have to go through the Board of County Commissioners. So currently, the gate rate is $50. It's forecasted out to, I believe, $59 in 2028. And the plan talks about holding that rate through 2035. I'm trying to think what else the council had talked briefly. We talked in finance as well as the last meeting. And you have to render a decision here based on, based on what your feelings are.
Well, thank you. I guess I want to point out two things. The resolution is a resolution to disapprove, so this is kind of confusing. So a yes vote means you disapprove it and a no vote means you approve it.
Here we go again.
It's kind of confusing. But anyways, going to the plan again, you know, the efforts of the county to recycle, at least separate the material to recycle material is good, right? They have a good plan to do that. But the problem that we've always had is once that recycled material is taken to the end user and they get, you know, tickets, away tickets and whatever at the recycling plant, from that point forward, there's no guarantee that that material is recycled. Even though we provide them with recycled material, we've been through this before. Channel 8 had a study and there's been multiple trackers in the garbage and it goes to the landfill. So it's kind of hard to say, well, we believe we're recycling when in fact, you know, we're not really recycling what we think we are. So that's kind of, the way I'm going to vote is yes on this because I disapprove it for the mere fact that there's no checks and balances down at the end stream that actually the recycling is occurring. Though we're being told by the people taking the tickets, yes, we took the recycled materials, nobody wants to tell us if it's actually being recycled. And I think that's a kind of a big hang-up for me is because if I'm going to tell a resident of the City of Medina that, yeah, we want you to recycle and they say, I'm doing my best to recycle, I can't with a straight face tell them, oh yeah, it's all being recycled because I have no idea if it is or isn't. All I know is it's being dropped off at a recycle center and from there, I can't tell you if it's being recycled or not. I think that's my biggest hang-up on it. I know that the county and the city, they are doing their part to try to put it into recycle bins and make sure that they recycle at home, but again, that's no guarantee that the material is actually recycled at the end user. And that's my understanding, correct, Mr. McCollough?
That's correct. However, I did want to add that interim sanitary engineer Jeremy Cinco did provide with the new contractor, Rumke, a list of addresses, and I believe I forwarded that, of the market buyers in this recent contract. So I mean, they are trying to tighten up their contract, but we still are in the same situation as we've been in for the past.
I understand. And I guess I just want to say that, you know, these are very difficult times because I don't think anybody does not, you know, want to not recycle. I think everybody wants to recycle, but we just don't know if it's happening. Any questions?
So John, what is the cost of just sending all your trash to the trash? I've heard $25.
I think, Mr. McCollough, I thought it was like $27 to $29 to take it directly to the landfill?
That number, I mean, it's 27, I believe.
Does $27 just go away and go to the center of the city? What if it gets to $50? No idea if it's going to the center of the city. That's our opinion and that's correct. That's why, at least, I'm going to vote yes to disapprove the plan because it doesn't, there's no logic to the conclusion because again, I think people would even pay more if they knew the material was being recycled. I think residents of the City of Medina would even pay extra if they knew that they were recycling, but there's no guarantee that that's happening and that's kind of the issue we have. But you're correct, Mr. Huber. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. First, let me just make a clarification of the ordinance that you received in your packet. There's a certain modification that was made by our outside counsel, Walter Haverfield, changing the $275,000 figure for the police and fire personnel costs to $290,990. This is to ensure that the unused balance of the business grant program that we earlier passed does not go to waste, but instead gets diverted to reimbursing the police and fire personnel cost. Because we got the money, we have to use it all at a certain period of time, so this helps us do that. So any further comment on that, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you alluded to, we had outside counsel help us with the language on this. It's been a very quick turnaround, because the feds passed this, and then we have to have the money encumbered by November 20th. We have to have it spent by December 28th. Things with the federal government don't usually move that fast. And we're still getting guidance from the federal government as to what we can and can't do. That's why we went to outside counsel to make sure we're on the right side of things here, so we don't have to return the money. So that has been very helpful, and then this kind of covers all that.
Thank you. Any further questions on that?
And the emergency clause is due to the timelines.
The deadline, yeah. We have to till this year, the end of this year, to make sure we spend approximately $1.7 million, so. It puts us under a time crunch. Will clerk please call the role and adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will clerk please call the role and adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 186-20, passes seven zero.
Ordinance 197-20, ordinance authorizing the establishment of a small business relief grant program with the appropriation of CARES Act funds to aid Medina businesses negatively impacted by the public health emergency caused by COVID-19.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. First, let me, there's a modification to this ordinance that was changed from the packet that was sent out. And I'm going to read the modifications. It was in the whereas clauses, first of all. It now reads, whereas the council further finds that an amount not to exceed $179,450 shall be appropriated towards the establishment of a small business relief grant program for Medina small business owners out of the funds from Medina's local coronavirus relief fund. Whereas the council further finds that the staff from Medina's Department of Economic Development have devoted approximately 160 hours during the course of the scope of their employment towards the administration of the Small Business Grant Relief Program, resulting in payroll costs of Medina Department Economic Development staff in the amount of $4,560. And whereas the council finds further that covering $4,560 in payroll costs is necessary expenditure due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, because the Department of Economic Development staff have performed functions in order to curb detrimental impact of COVID-19 has on Medina business community. And section one then reads that there has been established a small business relief grant program, which shall be funded by up to $179,450 from Medina's local coronavirus relief fund, and grant to any one business shall not exceed $20,000 as approved by the City Board of Control. And a new section two states that the Director of Finance is authorized to cause a transfer in amount of $4,560 from Medina's local coronavirus relief fund to the General Fund. So this will be a supplemental to that ordinance. Mr. Marshall, do you got more to add to that?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Just as we noted earlier, the request is for Council to approve 32 small business grant applications in the amount of $179,450 from businesses that were impacted to the mandatory government shutdown due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Each business will have to sign off on a small business grant agreement, which is under review by the Law Director, Ann Walter Haverfield, our outside counsel. You had already addressed our supplemental requests of the $4,560 for administrative time towards this effort. The emergency clause is being requested as the funding has to be appropriated by November 20th. And the funding is the CARES Act funding received from the county, who got it from the state, who got it from the federal government, which I think is why it took so long for it to get to the city level. So we're working with, we'll work with the Finance Department on making sure the businesses are registered with RITA and the other items that we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will clerk please call the role and adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will clerk please call the role and the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.